Welcome everyone. It's the first meeting after the election which is our organizational meeting. And apparently I'm the senior member. It catches me a little by surprise.
You've reached the top.
Congratulations.
Well, now this is, you know, the good news about this is I'm only here for a few moments because we need to nominate a chair for the upcoming year and a secretary.
I was thinking you look good up there so I'll nominate you.
And, you know, the school committee tends to rotate its chairs in a very regular and consistent manner. So I'm hoping that there can be a nomination from the floor for a chair.
I would move to nominate Mr. Bo as chair.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Any objection? Don't do that. All in favor? Opposed? Obstein? Thank you all very much. And now I'd like to take a nomination from the floor for secretary.
Nominate Dr. Stafford.
Second. Second. Discussion? Thank you very much. All in favor? Opposed? Obstein? John and Diane, I'd like to thank you very much for continuing in the roles you've had for this past year. And now we do this shuffled thing.
Do we talk about like adopting the policies and stuff?
Yes, this is supposed to be a work of optional matters.
Oh, see, I'm falling down on the job here.
You've never been in this position.
It's true.
Generally, the policies are kept in place unless there's some other ideas that you have. And then usually on the optional matters, it's usually done later on, the assignment to committees. Usually the chair checks with the members, particularly the new member Laurie, and finds out what they would like to do.
So can I have a motion to continue the adoption of the policies that we have had in place until this point? And a second? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Obstein? Thank you very much. Now we can do the shuffle.
What is the shuffle?
Yeah, everybody has to move to where they're supposed to be.
I think you stay.
I get to stay.
You get to stay there.
Lauren stays as the new person. And Leslie comes here.
Leslie goes down.
How people know this shuffle?
Peg.
Tradition.
Peg.
Peg is the only one that I knew that was going.
Is Peg a real person or is this not?
She is a real person.
The secretary goes there. I don't see a member goes there.
I would like to have you next to me.
Me too, and I like Laura too, but I don't know who next to her. It's so we get to sit next to different people every year.
But I said it was for a year. We already know each other. The disadvantage should, you know.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay then. Hello.
Mr. Bo.
Were we supposed to adjourn that last meeting?
Do we adjourn the other meeting?
Oh, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn. The organizational meeting.
Okay, okay.
I motion, yeah.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
All right, now it's called to order.
Thank you.
Seven forty. Welcome, everybody. All right, first order of business will be the superintendent's report.
Thanks, John. Number of things to report on. The first is the senior activities. I've received this information from Mike Harvey. The junior senior junior prom is May ninth. William Blacker awards are May twenty first. I think I gave a handout to the school committee this evening for the William Blacker awards. That's the, based on the senior thesis, the award winning papers. They read excerpts and then talk about their research. It's always a really great evening, so I'd really encourage any members of the committee that have an opportunity to come to that, because I believe it's a Wednesday evening. It's usually well attended by students. A lot of juniors attend that usually, thinking about doing the senior thesis the next year. So please come to that. Get a chance. The senior exams are May twenty third through May twenty ninth. We have graduation rehearsal in the next week. June third is senior service day. Seniors report to the cafeteria for breakfast and receive their assignments for the day. They bring a bag lunch and report back to the high school cafeteria at the end of the day for pizza. June third is also the Palm Senior Music Banquet that evening, six p.m. June fourth, the next day, is the Senior Cruise. And June sixth are senior awards that's held in the auditorium. And then graduation on June eighth. So it's a very full schedule for seniors. And I met with seniors today, some set of seniors, and they're very excited about the end of the year and very, very busy. Things have not lessened dramatically from all the other things you did all year, even though they are, since now with their senior thesis. We also had the Memorial Day exercises on Friday, May twenty third. We start off with a program at Belmont High. There's a continental breakfast there for the veterans and the teachers and students that are part of this. Then we move to Wellington, then to Winbrook, and then there's a luncheon at the DFW at about eleven thirty. Latin trip proposal for April two thousand nine. These all come actually to the superintendent, superintendent crew. These are included in the packet for the school committee. This is for going to Rome. It will be from April seventeenth to April twenty seventh, so it's actually eleven days. They're visiting in situ Roman buildings, ruins, and art. Visit Etruscan and Greek sites in Rome. I think they're also going down to Pompeii for part of the visit. They go on the catacombs as well, so it sounds like a terrific visit for the students. Okay, Jenny remembers that, yeah. Great.
How many years of Latin do the kids have to have this stuff?
That's a good question. I'm not sure. Pat, how many years of Latin do the students have? He did tell me they were all Latin students. And I think a number of them are AP students as well.
Could be four.
Yeah. So it should really be, I mean, you know, they should be able to appreciate it, which I think would really be fine. Anyway, a number of student awards that I'd ask Pat to read.
Just, I think we might have already announced the National Merit Scholars, but just to remind us that Belmont High School is pleased to announce that there were eight. And then lastly, Mr. Harvey also received word that Angie Tang from Belmont High School has been selected as the winner of two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight Siemens Award for Advanced Placement, and she will receive a $2,000 scholarship. Angie was selected for this award based on her exceptional performance on AP exams in both math and science. So congratulations to her for her fine performance and congratulations to all our semifinalists.
Great. Thank you, Pat. The Globe Northwest on Sunday had an article entitled "Following the Money." They did this for each region of the greater Boston area and talks about the average family income. In Belmont, it's one seventeen, one hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars. One of the things they pointed out was that there are some districts that have grown faster than others in terms of income growth from two thousand and one to two thousand and five. That's the timeframe they're looking at. And interestingly enough, of the twenty-four or twenty-eight communities that they include in the Northwest Region, that's what the Boston Globe includes, this information, by the way, is taken from the Internal Revenue Data by zip code. Belmont had the highest increase in salary, forty-three point three percent, which was interesting to me. I mean, it's because it's not the highest average income, family income, that was in our region, was Concord at two twenty-one, and then Lexington was about one fifty-nine, Harvard was about one sixty-nine, Winchester one fifty-six, and so on. So it'd be interesting to see what, how you might interpret that. I mean, one of the ways I think about it is that perhaps some families that were on fixed income had moved out, other families with larger incomes had moved in. But I'm not sure if that's the interpretation or not.
That's average income.
Average income, that's right, not median.
It was also interesting, they totally conflated zero-two-four-seven-eight with Belmont Hill.
I noticed that.
Not realizing that zero-two-four-seven-eight is the only zip code in Belmont.
Yes.
It was interesting to read their commentary because they so clearly associated this rise, you know.
Right, with Belmont Hill, yeah. I saw that. Lexington does have two area codes, zip codes, oh-two-four-two-oh and oh-two-four-two-one. And Bedford does too, I noticed, in there. So interesting information. The other thing that appeared in the Wall Street Journal on Monday had to do with kindergarten. German tots learn to answer the call of nature. Kindergarten moves into the woods. What about ticks?
You don't worry about.
So in Idstein, Germany, each weekday in Idstein, Germany, come rain or shine, a group of children walk into the forest outside Frankfurt to sing songs, build fires, and roll in the mud. To relax, they kick back in a giant sofa made of tree stumps and twigs. And they talk about the kids, it's called the walled kindergarten, which is forest kindergarten. The kids go out into the woods, and it's like a return to nature, and if they have to go to the bathroom, they sort of tootle off behind a tree, I guess. They sort of talk about this. It's also sort of interesting that they're doing this, and then they talk about the parents picking them up, and they're covered head to toe in mud, which must be a lot of fun. And they got a little picture of them here as well. So anyway, little humorous, little humorous comment on full day kindergarten.
Is that what we're going for?
We are not going for that, no. But I felt, I felt constrained to mention it, just for the fun effect of it. We're doing two searches right now. They are, we've started and posted them and advertised them, and we'll continue to, the searches will probably do the interviewing in early May, a search for the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, and a search for Director of Technology. As everyone knows, Lee McCann is resigning effective June thirtieth, moving to the Weston Public Schools and serving in that role there. We will certainly miss him, and so we'll do a search for that as well. We're posting that, and I'll keep you updated on both of those searches, as a matter of fact. And the last thing is, Pat passed out tonight something that arrived too late for us to include in the packet, and that's the Belmont High School Handbook. And the handbook has some information on some things that have changed. The changes, I think, are noted in the margins and...
And actually, that's all you are receiving, are the pages on which the changes have been made. Everything else is in place.
Is the same.
And there is, there was one concern that Mr. Harvey had, and we've straightened that out, thanks to Dr. Missile, and those were the activity fees that you'll see on page twenty-two of this document. They needed to be clarified because, first of all, this is the first time we've ever had a distinction between an athletic fee and an activity fee. And that, so that information will be clarified to reflect the most recent votes of the school committee regarding the athletic fee and the activity fee for students.
Okay, great. And that's everything. Joe?
So what will we do with this?
Hold on to it.
It's for your information. If you do have questions, after you've had a chance to peruse it, we'll be glad to invite Mr. Harvey to a school committee meeting.
So we'll be voting on this in the future?
I don't believe there's a vote anymore.
Is there? No, okay.
We used to, because we used to send them to the, all of, all to the state, but we'll double check.
We can double check. We have new council, so we'll see what the new council has to say on this. That's everything.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the chairman role, chair report. Many of you in this room were at the auction, the annual fundraiser for the Foundation for Belmont Education. It was in a record turnout. I'm not sure of the number of that, but also a record gross income of one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Last year was in the around ninety or so.
I think so.
So it's a special thanks to the organizers, the lead organizers, Heidi Sawyer, Carolyn Boyle, and Ginny Deriloff, and then the dozens of people working with them, and Neil Fay, the auctioneer.
You know what I would say about the foundation reception and dinner is it's not only a fundraiser, and it certainly is that, it also is just a great time. It really is a friend raiser where you meet a lot of people. Some people you don't see on a regular basis, and some people that you do see on a regular basis, but it's really good. And everybody is, it's a very festive mood. Teachers were there demonstrating smart boards. It was really a lovely evening, and I give all the credit in the world to the foundation, John Wong, Lynn Paul Kyrie, Ginny, Carolyn, Heidi, for all the work they did. It was just a tremendous evening.
The format changed. It was not as formal a sit-down dinner, and I think that worked better, there's more chance for mingling and...
And the auction was very successful, more successful than I can ever remember.
Did you win anything?
I did not win anything, John, but I'm used to that.
Okay. Also, the video done by Tom Kokum will be available, probably a longer version on a CD, DVD, and the shorter version will be available, I think, on the foundation website soon. We'll make sure I do that. Let's see, another item, town meeting starts two weeks from yesterday, April twenty-eighth. Should go for two or three evenings, Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Wednesday. Is all of us town meeting members? Most of us are. Next week is school vacation week. How much you looking forward to that? And MASC Day on the Hill is between the two town meeting dates. It'll be April twenty-ninth. Probably half of us have said we're gonna go to that. And finally, a special thanks to our retired, now retired selectman Paul Solomon, who just wrapped up six years on the board. He's been a friend of the schools and a friend to me. One thing, I remember him chiding me and saying, "Make sure you're home for dinner," just to, you know, "Don't get too wrapped up in, you know, your job, job, and this job, but, you know, remember that that is very important and make it one of the top things on your list."
That's great advice.
He scolded me, and it was very good advice. And what else? That's it for the chair report. Next item is citizens' concerns. If there's any citizens' concerns to bring to our attention, we won't necessarily address them, but you could address them to us. I see a hand. Dr. Alper.
Thank you. I appreciate the time, Mr. Chairman. We'll try to make it brief here. This is my daughter Megan Alper, who's a fourth grader at the Wellington. And the reason that I'm here is, I kind of have sort of the unfortunate task of speaking for my wife, who unfortunately was not able to be here tonight. As you and Ms. Grayan knows, my wife had presented a concern, which I would like the rest of the committee to know, about the methodology behind replacing a teacher, specifically for Megan in the fourth grade Wellington. I'd like to start by saying that the end result has worked out well, that there is a replacement in place. The teacher that Megan currently has is pregnant, and she's leaving on Friday for her maternity leave. And the teacher was brought in today and introduced to the children. There lies the problem, is that while the children and the parents were initially led to believe that there would be a nice, long interaction and grace period and introduction, in fact, this happened today. And people were scrambling, people were concerned, the children were anxious. I actually brought Megan here, because I think that, since she was inside, I think she can speak better than I can for what happened. My wife's concerned, my concern, I think other parents' concern, is really, again, the method and the lack of communication. That this teacher informed the school and the parents and the kids that she was pregnant in October, and most of us know, of course, how long that everybody gives us to work through. And there was plenty of time to work with it, and taking into account that it is difficult, I'm sure, to find a teacher to pick up in midstream. Six months should have allowed time to hopefully find someone and have a nice casual introduction, overlap, et cetera. And this just did not happen, calling a lot of angst on the part of the kids and the teachers. Why don't you tell them what happened?
They said that in two weeks, we would find out who the new teacher was, and she would come in, so we would all get to know her. But it happened today. Most of us kids know her, but some do not, because she's one of the reading teachers and helps kids write and read. And at recess, all the kids were talking about it for two weeks, waiting for everybody to find out who the new sub was. And everybody was very anxious, but today we found out, and we were all happy, but we were all very upset that we did not find out sooner, because we waited this long, and some of us know her, but not that well.
Okay, thank you, Megan.
I have no idea where she gets her speaking ability from. But that's really, you know, it's in a nutshell. I mean, as I said, on the one hand, you could look at the end result, that this is someone that is known to the kids, and those that have worked with her apparently like her very much. Seems very personable, I guess she's got quite a few years' teaching experience. And hopefully it'll be a little easier transition because she is known to it. But everybody was kept in the dark, and it just really went on too long. And so I guess what I'm here to ask is, we're certainly not looking for heads to roll and blood flow through the halls of the Wellington, but maybe a chat, just to kind of say, you know, it's all about community. And if we can just simply kind of put it out a little more forward, maybe everybody will just take this type of difficult transition. You know, it's hard on kids. I mean, it's one of the reasons I wanted to bring Megan tonight. This probably wouldn't be a big deal to a tenth or eleventh grader, I mean, they'll just diss any teacher in front of them anyway, probably. Fourth graders really, you know, and I think we forget, they form a bond and a relationship with their teachers, and we want them to. And I'm sure that Ms. Westford leaving is a little tough on some of the kids. I think a more gradual, involved transition might have just worked better. So as I said, I know that she spoke to you, John, and to you, Laurie, and it's not that she ignored the others, I think she didn't want to call all six. So we just wanted to put that forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, Megan.
Thanks, Megan.
All right, any other concerns? Seeing now, first order of major business would be discussion of the school committee comprehensive plan or its planning.
Welcome back, Jenny.
Come on down.
Come on up. Good night, then.
Thank you.
Come on, we'll discuss it.
Oh, you know, it's a little... I'm pinching on your face. Thank you for having me. Excuse me. I sent out quite a lot of paper. I don't know if any of you had a chance to read any of it. I didn't bring copies of everything, but I did bring extra copies of the cover memo if anyone wants one of those and hasn't had a chance to see it. I'm coming because the planning board is finally having a chance to start a process of developing a comprehensive plan for Belmont. We expect to need funding for this, but we think that, I know this budget process has been very difficult for everyone, but we think that funding for this is actually gonna come through. We hope it's still maybe under some discussion. I believe that it's got the support of the Board of Selectmen, and I think it's gonna happen. So we are starting the process.
The fifty thousand.
Does anybody else need copies? Have extra copies here? You're fine, okay.
So I just wanted to, we're dividing up and coming out to about, I don't know, ten or twelve boards, just to start the process of thinking about the scope. In order to start this, we have to put out an RFP for consulting services, because we need a consultant to help us run the process. And so, we want to reach out to other boards this spring to have conversations about, A, what this process is, because we really are going to need a lot of help doing it. This is not something that one board does, it's something that the whole town does. And we're starting with boards and committees, because we are the people who have the most focus perhaps on what the priorities of the town might be, and we thought that that would be the best place to start to discuss the scope, what we in fact ought to include in order to make this a Belmont-centered plan, not just a sort of general generic plan under the enabling legislation. Not enabling just the legislation that describes it. And, that being said, coming to the school committee is a little bit different from coming to the other boards, because the school committee has its own strategic plan, its own strategic planning process. And in fact, this is more like a town strategic plan than anything else. It's townwide, it will encompass land use and development guidance, if you will, for the next years. It should take into account what the priorities of the town are, both for land use, for open space, for housing, for economic development, for environmental issues, all kinds of things, the kinds of things that were included in the documents that I sent you, which are just for background. I mean, the planning board wanted to put together a few pages just to sort of give people an idea of the kinds of things we're thinking about, but they're supposed to be the basis for conversation, not the end of the conversation. Anyway, coming to the school committees, I said, is a little bit different from other boards, because we want to know what the school's priorities are, but we have to think about this from the point of view of the town, rather than an internal school committee point of view on the schools and, you know, the curriculum and the kinds of things that the school committee typically looks at. What we want to do is focus, if we can, with the school committee a little bit, on how the schools fit into the town, what the priorities of the town ought to be with regard to the schools, how the town should be looking at the schools and the future of the schools, what the schools are going to need, how can we make the schools better, but not getting into the internal workings of the curriculum and instruction, because that really isn't part of this plan. It's a separate piece. So, that being said, I just want to sort of go over this memo quickly with you, just so you have a sense of what I've been talking about here. As I said in here, the last time a comprehensive plan was adopted for Belmont was in 1960s, which is a very long time ago. In the meantime, the zoning bylaws have been recodified, I think more than once, but the most recent time was in 1988, which in itself is a long time ago. Since then, there have been about 120 or 130 amendments to the zoning bylaws. The zoning bylaws themselves need to be revisited, and that will happen, we hope, but after this process, because we want to have this process go forward so that we have a sense of the direction that we're heading in. There are extreme fiscal constraints in the town, as you know. There are some developments which have been proposed, some that are underway, and there's a lot of discussion of open space needs, and recreation needs, and school needs, and all kinds of things that are moving forward, which will all be expensive. And, just thinking together about how the town looks now, how it feels, what kinds of changes may come over the next 10 to 20 years, and how we want to manage those, what will we welcome, what will we not welcome, what do we have control over, what don't we have control over? How do we fit into the region? Are there regional developments? Are there regional issues? Are there opportunities for regional sharing of resources, of support for services? Those kinds of things are the kinds of things that we hope we'll be looking at. So you can see from the bottom of this page that those are the kinds of things that I've put here as questions. And what we're really looking for is, what are your thoughts about the priorities, concerns, issues that arise for the town, from the point of view of the schools, but from the point of view of anything, really? I'm welcome to take comments about anything. And what do you think this plan, how are we to be thinking about goals in terms of this plan? Issue areas? Anything that sort of occurs to you? The reason we're doing this now, as I said, partly is to reach out and just educate everybody about what this planning process is, because this is going to take two years to do. And the first year is going to be mostly outreach, not only to boards and committees, but also to the residents of the town, in a variety of ways. That's really mainly what the consultant will help us with. And then the second year, we hope, will be taking all of that input and coming to some policy decisions, setting some goals, and actually writing the plan. But in order for the plan to make any sense to anyone, to have any effect, it has to be widely understood, participated in, and have some good oversight when we actually get it to move it forward. The plan will consist of a number of things, goals, priorities and so on, but it will also have some suggestions for implementation. And there will be assignments to various boards and committees for certain pieces to happen. It's very much like the strategic plan for the school department. The planning board will be the body overseeing it, sort of writing heard, making sure things are actually happening. And I think it will be adopted by town meeting when we actually get it. That should be part of the process. And so, I don't know if you have any questions about what it is, or what we're doing. I think this should be more familiar to the school department than anybody else, actually, in town, because we do have the strategic plan. And that's been a process we've been through several times in the school department. So, it's not exactly the same, but I think there are a lot of similarities. So I'm just looking for ideas from you about how the schools fit into this, and how they fit into the town. There is no sheet about the school department, about the public schools, among the issue sheets that I gave you. And that's partly because I was the one who was supposed to write it, and when I tried to, they all said to me, oh, you know, this is coming from the school committee point of view, it's really not very helpful. Because I was putting out facts about the schools, and yet, we all agreed at the same time that the schools in Belmont, as you know, are a very high priority for this town. And you can't undertake a strategic plan for the town without taking into account the schools, and without considering how to fit the schools into the plan. There are certain obvious places, in terms of public facilities and buildings, in terms of cultural resources, those are two buckets that the school department sort of obviously fits into. There may be other ways. So, I'm talking too much.
A lot of this sounds like the Vision 21 process.
It is.
How do you?
The Vision 21 process was like this, but this will come out with something which is far more specific and detailed than that. That came out with a one-page vision, which is certainly a guide, but this is supposed to come out with something much more like the school department's strategic plan, with, you know, a lot of different areas, goals, implementation steps, something that's more concrete perhaps than the vision.
Forgive me if I didn't read something I was supposed to read. You mentioned an issue sheet. I don't think I've seen any of those, so I don't know that I know the model. And if I didn't read something I was supposed to read, I apologize to you.
No, that's fine.
But let me just say, not knowing the model, I'd have a couple of questions, which maybe would be answered if I knew the model. Do you envision the school committee being, do you envision the committee doing this, and a member of the school committee, or representative of the school community on that? Or do you see the school committee as just someone that your group will come to and interview and get feedback from?
I don't know exactly what the process will be yet, because we haven't actually worked it out in detail yet. However, my guess is that there will be not just one, but a number of different committees. There may be a steering committee. If there is a steering committee, will it be formed from officials on boards already? I'm not sure. There probably will be some representation, but I wouldn't necessarily think it would be the school committee. This is going to be a very broad process. There'll be some surveys, there'll be some focus groups, there'll be some large, you know, hearings, there'll be all kinds of different ways of doing outreach, I think, into the community. I think that there will be probably more than one visit. I mean, this is just a preliminary visit, really, just to sort of put the idea on the table and to get feedback if you have it, but we'll be back. The planning board is not going to be able to do this by itself, though. It's clearly going to have to involve a lot of other people. And will there be specific tasks that we want boards and committees to perform? Things to be written, you know, suggestions to be looked at and responded to? There may well be that kind of thing going on. But I don't expect that it's going to be a burden for one particular school committee member, or it's the point of view of having to serve on a board that will take two years, you know, that doesn't.
I wasn't thinking of it so much as a burden, as, you know, the level of participation that you were envisioning for the community. That was sort of the spirit of my question. But, you know, if you haven't figured it out yet, we'll just stay tuned.
We haven't figured it out yet, but I would expect that we want to keep people involved and focused on it. You know, to the extent, how much the school committee will be involved depends to some extent on how much of an issue the school department is, and how it's addressed within the scope of the plan. And I don't know the answer to that yet either, so that's part of what we're trying to think about.
At this point in time, as we take a chance to digest all of this, do you want feedback from us as individual school committee members, or do you want feedback from us as a board? And I think that's a critical distinction for how we would proceed with this.
I actually think we would be happy to have either or both. I mean, this is very informal at this point. We're just taking feedback, we're just trying to look for suggestions before Jay and Jeffrey turn to the writing of the RFP for the consulting services. We want to focus the plan, as I said, to tailor it to Belmont. So how we do that, and how we think about housing, and schools, and economic development, and all of those things, and how we balance those things, how we put those things on the table for a consultant, is what we're looking for. So I would be delighted if you want to have a conversation tonight with me here, and give me feedback as a board. I'd also be delighted to hear from any of you individually, with any suggestions that occur to you. If you want to have further conversation, you know, and bring me back, I'd be happy to do that, or I'd be happy to just have you think about it, pass something around, and then email it over to us. It's really quite informal at this point. I'm not, there's no rigid process, we're just looking for suggestions.
Lori?
Speaking not as a school committee member, but as the Chair of the Disability Access Commission, I'm hoping that there'll be some action, interaction with that commission.
Absolutely.
We've been sort of lagging behind and getting on board with things when they're half-done or half undone.
Yeah.
So that if we could, as a commission, I mean, I'm speaking as the outgoing chair, but that if we could have ongoing dialogues about how each of these things sort of would be impacted by ADA of the buildings and infrastructure and the recreation department.
Yes, that's a good suggestion. You know, we are starting with, as I said, 12 or 14 boards, but we really intend to come to everybody. I mean, we will, in the end, involve all the boards in town. Excuse me. Because this is townwide, it's supposed to look at all issues, and that's certainly going to be an area that we'll be visiting.
What's your titling for 21 RFP issued?
We are going to, because we expect the funding to start July 1st, we expect to release the RFP sometime in mid-June, I believe, and so, it'll be being written starting in mid-May. I mean, that's the kind of timeframe we're looking at.
I just thought, my feeling is that I'd like to have a better sense of, you know, what the framework is that you're going to be looking for feedback on, you know, in terms of trying to imagine how the schools fit in with this plan.
Well, did, hmm, does anybody have these?
I have.
I downloaded all of them.
That'll give you a sort of a start. There are more. Actually, you just have all of these. I have more.
Email?
Yeah. People get the email that I sent.
I probably did. And I do apologize.
There were maybe 10, or there were a lot. At least eight or nine.
One big PDF.
Yeah.
You sent one PDF, but I sent nine individual Word documents to, yeah.
I apologize for dropping the ball.
It was last week, maybe Thursday or Friday or something.
Yeah, that's right.
And it's a lot of stuff to take in. And as I say, those are just, they're sheets that are developed by all individuals on the planning board, so they're all slightly different. But they're just supposed to be giving you a sense of the kinds of things, the kinds of questions we're asking, for the most part. They're done in question form. There's one, I don't know if you have the one, environmental issues, somewhere. There are a number of different ways of looking at the structure for this, and these, as I said, each one is slightly different, but most of them consist of questions, because they're just supposed to be the basis for helping other boards think about this, and giving you some structure to sort of focus on. But as I said, what we're really looking for now are, as a board, as individuals, what are your thoughts about what this town's priorities ought to be for its schools? And one of the big ones, obviously, is funding. So, I'm happy to, you know, include that. That's sort of obvious, so I don't, you know, I'm not even sure we need to say that, although it's always good to say it, because we always need it.
Adequate, sustainable, and sufficient funding.
And, you know, how this community is going to continue to pay for its services, including its schools, is one of the very largest questions we're going to have in the next 10 to 20 years. And that, you know, feeds into the whole notion of economic development, and will that help, and how much, and what are our alternatives? This document will not be something that necessarily focuses on services, but it's clear that our, the way we think about the future of the services in the town has a lot to do with the way we think about how we should use the land that we have in the town. And so, to that extent, there's a significant interaction. And so, there will be discussion, but this isn't going to be the kind of plan that's going to look in detail at a set of services. It's going to look more in detail at thinking about the kind of zoning we have, does that support the kind of direction and goals that we have? Will it support economic development? Will it support affordable housing to the extent that we need to? Will it support our schools? How can we, as a community, come together and shape a community that we like better than what we have now? Or what do we want to preserve about what we have now as we move forward? Those are the kinds of overall umbrella questions that we're looking at.
Jenny, where is the funding coming from for the planning process? You said the funding starts to life first.
Yeah, it'll be part of the budget.
Top budget.
Jenny, I know you remember this, but a number of years ago, we had the Financial Task Force. Bill Skelly kept track of all the meetings. We gave up essentially summer time. We'd travel around on the bus and look at the roads, and we met once a week.
Two years' worth.
Yeah, you know, for, you know, during the year, and then during the summer even, and Bill counted the meetings every, you know, the 60s or 70s, the number of meetings that we had. It was, I think it served a purpose, and a valuable purpose in the sense of, and it was a small group of people, maybe 10, 15, as I recall. I don't, I think I've thrown away all the papers from the planning that we did. Because it helped to focus attention to what this was. The other thing that I recollect very well, in terms of capital needs, was the work, and I especially thought it was helpful when Will Brownthorpe, who is Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, pulled together not only all the needs that we had, both operational and capital, but that he also did it in a spreadsheet, talking about, yes, we can afford to do this. I think one of the things that stifles the community sometimes is it looks like it's so expensive that you almost feel like giving up, you know? How are you going to afford the roads? How are we going to afford sewers and water that we need? And Ralph pointed out that the liability on this, I believe, if I recollect correctly, is up enough, over $100 million for a replacement of all these pipes that are underground. These are things we don't even see, sewers and pipes and things like that. And it seems to me that this kind of planning is absolutely essential, to get some way of thinking about the structural imbalance we now have, but also finding a way to make it happen in an incremental fashion, so that people can feel good about the success that the community has, as well as see that, you know, we have to take 15 more bites on this before we get it done. And that's really what it's about, because attacking the structural problems, which have taken a long time to build up, will also take, I suspect, a long time to solve.
I think that's right. And thinking about things like, you know, the high school. I'm intimately familiar with the high school planning, because I was the chairman of the group that looked at that for, we've done it over a number of years now, but, you know, what kind of community asset is the high school? That's the kind of thing I think we need to think about. It's an enormous community asset. It just, you know, a lot of communities didn't build this kind of high school in the 70s, when this was built, 60s, late 60s. And, you know, we are very fortunate. And what does it mean to the community to maintain that facility and use it as an asset for many, many years to come? And how should we plan for that? How should we think about that? That's perhaps relevant to this. You know, the placement of the schools, are they in the right place? I mean, if we're thinking ahead 20 years, are there any things that occur to the school committee and the school administration that, you know, that we should, as a town, be thinking about for the future of these schools? No, we're a pretty, small school department in some ways, you know, four elementary schools, one middle school, one high school. Will that change? Will those, the needs for those change? Will there be a large increase in enrollment? I don't think we foresee that at this point, but those kinds of questions are the kinds of things we're going to be thinking about, I think.
Well, I think one of the things that would be interesting to see in this plan is, do you foresee a lot of apartment building going on in the town? Like, we're talking about the Uplands project, there's a big project that's been proposed in Pushing Square. Will that impact the schools? If so, part of the planning process might be a recommendation that 10 years out, we need to build a new elementary school, or change the configuration of the middle school, or something like that. If the plans that you end up proposing for the town will affect the population of the children who are in the, of school-aged children, it's important to take that into account, so the schools that we have don't get completely overloaded.
Yeah, another way of sort of getting at this, maybe to think about, I started to say something about this with the high school, but the interaction of the community with the school department and the school facilities. I don't know if there's anything in the strategic plan that, maybe taking a look through the strategic plan and seeing if there's anything in that that you think it would be helpful to pass on, might be another way to consider this issue. I haven't read the school's strategic plan for some years now, so I'm not up to date, I'm afraid, but that might be a good thing to do. There might be some things about that. Yeah, certainly, thinking about how we think about housing, whether we think that in this town, we need to allow some rise in density as part of either economic development or just, you know, whatever, to provide different kinds of housing than what we have now, which is primarily sort of one type, one-to-family houses is most of our housing stock. How will that change? Does the community want it to change those? Well, certainly some of the things that we're talking about, and that certainly does affect the school census, if you will, and so the facilities that we need. Yeah.
In terms of the timing of this, this is a two-year process, you're saying, right? Which will dovetail nicely, actually, with our next round of a strategic plan. The one we have right now goes through 2010, so we'll actually be beginning the process with a new superintendent. And can certainly be making sure that we're thinking of the two things together.
Good. That is, that's very, that's fortunate, because I think the processes are aligned, and that would be very helpful, I think, to be going through at the same time, with the different perspectives in mind.
Well, I just want to say, it seems like a great project for the planning board and the planning department to be taking on, because, you know, planning's good. I think we've learned that lesson in the schools. I think we are able to deliver what we can deliver at the cost we do, because of the amount of planning that goes into things. So if the town's doing it, I'm all in favor of that.
Well, one of the main reasons we're doing it, that I have, I've been advocating for this for a while, and I think that it will be very helpful in allowing there to be a public airing of a lot of the things that are being talked about now, because there are a lot of changes sort of on the horizon, or even here now, that are coming together at once. And I think we really do have to think as a community about how this all fits together. I mean, Belmont, in the past, has tended very much to react to things on the basis of the immediate neighborhood, the physical neighborhood, of a new project, a new town building, a new private building, whatever. And thinking overall about, as a town, about what we want, what we want our commercial centers to look like, how dense they should be, should we change any of our zoning zones, you know? Are there districts that ought to be larger or smaller, or different in some way? Do we have the right ones? You know, why is it that most of our properties are non-conforming? You know, does that make a difference to anyone? You know, there are a lot of questions about the physical space. We are a built-out community, so it's not, we're not looking for, you know, a large section on new developments. However, redevelopment, that's another question. And how's that going to occur, if it is going to occur? What is it we'd like the town to look like? What effect will that have on the schools is something that, I mean, it could have a large effect on the schools. If the town changed considerably, how much will it change? I don't know. And how long a timeframe are we looking out? How far is it possible to look out? But basically, can we get together and come to some consensus about the direction for the town? Because there's a lot of pressure for change right now. And so I think this is a good time to look at this, a good time to think about these questions, and I welcome any input that the school department has to the process.
Seems like this would have fit nicely into the Blue Pink group that we had going, with the Selectmen or Committee, you know, that was, we're looking for some answers that, you know, that'd take a long time to develop.
Well, that's right. And those groups, I think many of them came to find that there are a lot of hard questions about regionalization, about, you know, use of facilities one way or another. And I think it does need talking about in a broader context, and that's what we're trying to do here, so.
I was, in terms of moving forward, I think it's something that we all need to think about first as individuals, and then move to having a conversation as a board about how we might do that. Now, whether we do that, we bring Jenny back, we have two more meetings. Nope, is that what?
Three more.
Three?
Two in June, one in May.
So we have the 13th? Okay, three more meetings. But it sounds like you're looking for some input for June.
We are, but, I mean, we'll take.
So we've got a meeting on May 13th, it could become some part of the agenda, or then June 3rd, but is that too late for you to?
Nothing will be sent out by June 3rd, I don't think. So if you have reason to want me back, if you have suggestions that you think would help if we discussed, then I'd be happy to come back in May or June 3rd, whichever, if I can, if I'm here. I think I am. But, yeah, or, you know, we can take something written, whatever is the best way to get information back.
Come to you in Bar Harbor.
I would welcome the visit. It's a lovely house. It's small, though. So.
Pay your attention.
Pay your attention.
That's right. One question, have other peer towns gone through this process recently?
There are a lot of towns that have, and we actually have some examples from other towns. The one that we really like the best is Wellesley. Wellesley has done this, actually, they've done it on an ongoing basis. I don't know when they wrote their first one, but it was some time ago, and they've done, I think what they think of as an update, really, every five years or so. And that has really, in their And that has really, in their own estimation, kept them moving forward as a community.
That's what we do.
Yeah, exactly. So I, I think it's, it's been, they've found that to be very, very valuable. And, you know, every five years, the focus may be slightly different, things will have occurred, things will have changed, different priorities, but, but we're just starting from scratch here. We haven't done this in so long that we really have got to first write the first draft, if you will, and, and see where it takes us. And then hopefully, we'll be able to keep it up and, and keep looking ahead, because I think it is a valuable process. So, thank you for your time, and...
Thank you.
Thank you for all this, and we'll look forward to hearing them.
Yes, appreciate it.
Hey, you know, I'm happy to speak.
Okay, next item is school calendar for next school year.
Pat presented this, I think, at our last meeting, and I don't know if there's anything else you need to say about it?
I counted the days. Did you? Good, thanks, good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You know, one thing I noted is there's a long Christmas vacation.
There is, that's right. That's worth noting. That's different. Some parents have asked me to personally remind them of that, because they said the kids were home a lot longer than they expected to be two or three years ago when we did it four years ago. So she said, if you ever do that again, remind me, so I'll try to remember the parents at all.
You'll be here.
I think it's a terrific idea.
Is that save us money with heating by having a long break in the middle of the winter?
I don't know what we're going to do with the kids. Can I, I'll move the approval of the school calendar for 2008, 2009?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Well, here, this will be published in usual places.
It will be.
On the website soon, just so parents can plan.
Okay, good, we'll make sure we do that.
We need those two curriculum days set first, people.
Right.
They are not?
No.
Okay, but they, they are accounted for somewhere?
Yes, they are.
They're just not picked.
Yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll just, we'll tell the principals about it when we meet with them on Thursday this week.
So the curriculum days were, people liked having them next to a weekend, just so you could make a long weekend.
If possible. People appreciate it.
Next item, speaking of calendars, the approval of the last day of school for this year.
I believe it's June 18th for all students.
Do we really have to approve it?
Well, it's usually, it's one of the things that we, I know, it does seem very momentous, but it is a thing that we ask the committee to approve, just so that it's all set, so people know, and then we ask the principal to put it through the class.
Do you like to move approval, Laurie?
Sure. I move that we approve.
Second.
Okay, those in favor of June 18th, the last day of school?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So we should sort of drag on time until Bill gets here? Is that the story?
Uh, well, actually, we've got some, we've got fee increases, and then we've got transportation. I think that'll take a little bit of time.
Fee increases, Jerry can lead this?
Yes, Jerry, yes.
Okay, when we developed the budget which you approved on public hearing on March 25th, we made some assumptions about the fee increases, but they now need to be voted one by one.[1751.94]